Order. I call this meeting to order at twelve thirty-one P M daylight savings time. Auto. Uh, I'll ask for invocation and I'll ask um. Okay, is it Laverne? Can you give us the invocation?
Sorry.
Amen. Okay, next we do the approval of the agenda. I need a motion. Priscilla and Paul. So Sophie Paul. Okay, questions, comments, concern? Um, I can have. Geller just summarize the main portion of the agenda.
Sir. Alright, Tapiquin Chapter, the hybrid chapter, chapter meeting agenda, September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, ten A M. Preliminary is meeting call to order invocation, approval, agenda and meeting minutes. Number two is chapter and committee reports. Number three is presentations. Number four is ARPA updates. Number five, uh, number three, old business. There's none, new business. And T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero zero one, accepting and approving the August two thousand twenty-four budget report. Number two is accepting and approving the monthly cash deposit receipt, uh, receipt deposits for August two thousand twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Number five, number three is accepting and approving the student financial assistance to eligible applicants in the amounts requested. Number four is approving and supporting the budget transfer of five hundred dollars from Stif- uh, Stifans Meetings Special to uh, Stifan Meetings Planning, five hundred dollars uh, to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated. Number five is approving and supporting the budget transfer of five hundred and seventy-nine dollars from Fund of Stifan Meetings Special to fund Stifan Meetings Regular, uh, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars to cover shortfalls to date that were not anticipated. Number six is approving and supporting the budget transfer of six hundred and forty-one dollars and nine cents from Stifan Meetings Agency to fund Stifan Meetings Regular, six hundred and forty-one dollars and nine cents to cover shortfalls to date that were not anticipated. Number seven is approving and supporting the need to purchase a storage building for all NOS regional chapters and requesting Nava Nation Council Delegate Herman Daniels Jr. to seek funding for the chapters. Number eight is supporting, uh, approving and supporting the housing discretionary assistance to eligible applicants in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars to their selected vendor. Number nine is approving and supporting the budget transfer of three hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents to fund repair and maintenance vehicles, to fund seminars and registration fees to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated. Number ten is regu- uh, approving and supporting the referendum measure to be placed on the two thousand twenty-four Nava Nation general election to reduce the commission naval government development from twelve to five members while working with the two uh, twenty-fifth Nava Nation Council to introduce legislation to of referral to be administered by the naval election administration. Number eleven is approving and supporting the initiation of the process to adopt a local tax ordinance as per the Nava like, Nava Nation Local Tax Code, C J A twelve eighteen and model chapter tax ordinance template. Number twelve is approving and supporting the budget transfer of five thousand seventy-nine dollars and forty cents from fund building materials to fund salaries temporary, uh, four thousand six hundred and eight dollars. Also to fund their, uh, FICA expenses of two hundred and eighty-seven, two hundred and eighty-five seventy. And then to fund Medicare expenses, sixty-six eighty-two, to fund Suda expenses of eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents to fund workman's compensation expense of thirty-four fifty-six to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated. And then number thirteen is going to be the support and the supporting and the removal of the Nava Nation President, uh, President Dr. Boo Van Nigren and President Vice President, um, Rochelle Montoya directing the Tapiquin Chapter Council Delegate to immediately request the removal resolution. Urge the Speaker of the Nava Nation to direct their Legislative Council to make this legislation a priority. The Congress, the com- and commence decision discussions on removal. And further directing the Tapiquin Chapter Council Delegate to execute the purpose of this resolution.
Resolution, resolution.
Okay. Okay. Then we have announcements and then upcoming meetings and then adjournment.
Okay, uh, agenda has been read to us, um.
So the the one things on your guys' agenda, it's only gonna have, um, eleven, but the so numbers ten, numbers, I think it was ten and eleven were moved up to eight and nine, which was the C L U P C ones. So if you look on your agenda, it should be these, the, the last ones that were on, on, on the current agenda that you had. Those were moved up to, um, where the C L U P C items were. Uh, being that the C L U P C did not have resolutions and we're not gonna entertain any of those. Along with that, we're also requesting the number twelve to be added, so twelve and thirteen should be open. And number twelve is gonna be the transfer for the ARPA funds. And then also number thirteen will be the, um, supporting the removal. Good. Or you want me to put it all in there? Let me change this here.
He's working, uh, he's putting it into the agenda. Hi, I'm Paul, he's, um, getting those printed. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead. So what happens when we talk about discussion for the agenda? That's why it's called, um, what people call a working document. Because this is what the agenda is posted, that's on there. But I start, I always told you that we always leave resolution spots open. Open for resolutions that come in on that day, like, like the Boo Van Nigren one, no confidence resolution. We just was given that resolution. Um, because we were looking for a resolution on how to, how to, uh, word it. This person outside gave us that resolution, so we're gonna add it. We always, we're talking about adding it, but we don't begin. So D E P has already printed out and given to you. So when we talk about it, right now we're talking about the agenda. We have a motioner and a second. So right now, I mean, we're talking about the agenda. And this is where we can correct or add to the agenda. And that's what we're doing right now. So yes, this agenda is what we're talking about, but it's gonna change because two resolutions were added. So auto aid, that's what we're saying, that our new agenda is gonna be. So auto aid, that's what we take the vote on, is the changes that this agenda has.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, any other changes or anything like that? Okay, no, hey, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. There's fifteen official. Call for the vote, raise your hands, all those in favor.
Hellroy, having a vote. Okay. Voting in favor, Mr. Hellroy and Tiffany Crowley voting in favor. That's twenty-two.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, approval of the agenda passes with twenty-two approvals, zero opposed, six abstaining, chair not voting. Approval of last meeting minutes, August twelfth, two thou- two thousand twenty-four. Motion? Jamie? Seconds? Okay, second by Amy Thompson. Questions, comments, concerns on the, um, always try to take a look, um, after our planning meetings and after our chapter meetings. Um, go to the chapter website and do you post on Facebook too?
No, just the website.
Go to the chapter website. On there, the meeting minutes will always be posted. So go take a look at that, um, but these are the meeting minutes. Go ahead.
You want me to read it?
Summarize.
Summarize. Okay, Tapiquin Chapter Meeting, uh, Chapter Meeting Agenda, it's actually supposed to be minutes, but, uh, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Zoom meeting provided, meeting was called to order at eleven fifteen A M. invocation was done by Mark Tommen. Um, motion to approve, the agenda was by Priscilla Benali, second by Renella Willie. Uh, Priscilla, Priscilla requesting to, um, table resolutions, uh, eleven and four. And then there was a second motion to remove resolutions fourteen and eleven. And also to edit the word on, I'm sorry, to remove resolution number fourteen and change the wording on resolution eleven to acknowledge and add to the twenty-fourth council. Second was done by Priscilla Judge, approve was twenty-five, zero opposed and twenty-five abstain with chair not voting. Vote was twenty-thirty in favor, zero opposed and twenty abstain. Last meeting minutes for July two thousand twenty-eight, motion by Renella Willie, second by Priscilla Gay, votes thirty-two. Approve, zero opposed and seventeen abstain, chair not voting. Presentation was done by L D A Herman Dan- Herman Daniels, L D A, second, and then grazing official provided his report. ARPA updates were provided. The but, uh, resolution number one. Motion by Dale Tate, second by Priscilla Benali, votes twenty-six approved, zero abstain, zero opposed and twenty-four abstained. Chair not voting. Number two was Renella Willie motion, second by Priscilla Benali, twenty-three in favor, zero opposed, twenty-seven abstain. Number three, Billy Goodman Jr., motion, second by Jim Sinajini, thirty-four approve, zero opposed, eighteen abstained. Chair not voting. Number four is Billy Goodman Jr., second by Dale Tate, thirty-three approve, zero opposed, nineteen abstain. Number five, uh, Priscilla Benali votes, motion, second by Laverne Blake, thirty-three approve, zero opposed, nineteen abstain. Number six, motion by Renella Willie, second by Thomas Bryant, thirty-four approve, zero opposed, eighteen abstained. Number seven, yeah, motion by Dale Tate, second by Priscilla Benali. Votes thirty-five approve, zero opposed, seventeen abstain. Number eight is motion by Terry Hurley. Uh, second by Priscilla Benali, thirty-six approve, zero opposed, sixteen abstain. Number nine is, was motioned by Jim Sinajini, second was, I did not record the second, I'll add that there. Approved is thirty-six, zero opposed and sixteen abstained. Number ten, uh, motion by Jamie Notisting, second by Dale Tate, vote was thirty-seven approve, zero opposed and fifteen abstain. Number eleven uh, was motioned by Priscilla Benali, second by Shirley Yazi. Uh, vote was thirty-six, twenty-six approve, two opposed and twenty-four abstained. Number twelve. Billy Goodman Jr., yeah, motion, second by Renella Willie, vote was thirty-two approve, zero opposed, twenty abstain. Number thirteen, uh, motion by Billy Goodman Jr., second by Priscilla Benali. Vote was thirty-one approve, zero opposed, twenty-one abstain, fourteen is, was removed, fifteen was removed, sixteen was removed. Reports were provided and then that announcements with meeting adjourned at three thirty, three oh three P M. Motion by Jamie Notisting, second by Billy Goodman Jr., votes twenty-five approve, zero opposed and zero abstain.
Okay, thank you. Auto, questions, comments, concerns? But, uh, with just, uh, that one, um, adding, uh, the second to one of the resolution. So if there are no other questions, comments or concerns, all those in favor, please raise your hands.
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight with the virtual attendees.
Okay, oppose? Abstain? Okay, approval of the last meeting minutes, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, passes with twenty-eight uh, approvals, zero opposed, uh, eight abstain, chair not voting. Okay, chapter and committee reports. I have none, so I'm not gonna do a report. Um, except that all things are working well and most of the updates will probably be on the projects mainly. Auto, um, Tancy, do you have anything to report? Secretary Treasurer? None? Okay, chapter manager is busy managing over there for now. Uh, senior center, citizens center, eh, she's not here. Uh, Virginia Crank for Head Start is not here. Community Health Representative. Our representative, Nikki, I still vacant, so we haven't found her. Um, they haven't told us if we have one yet. Veterans, um, is not here, Cluxy. Um, Shama Jamie, do you have anything to report?
Uh, the only thing we have is that, um, we're supposed to give the resolution, but we, we found out that it wasn't done. And but, um, we were talking about the wood permit. They, I'm just telling them wood permit here, put on there and how people not to get over their trash or they think young or everything they was.
Okay. Okay.
And then the, um, the, the, the crossroads, the, uh, Philly, San Antonio. And Ada, um, the what, Vernon said they weren't, that that was gonna be enough. And then Casino too, they, uh, in the fun, that's a, um, but the I D V or the people that are, you know, tourists, they they leave their trash there and argue that they use the bathroom there and just, you know, college, the door of trash that kind of out and they do. Maybe, um, they're saying that we, uh, the vacuum, but, uh, let the Ada know if they can, you know, put a sign up saying that it's your trash or for the trash can.
Oh, square B's.
Okay. Those will be noted. Probably notify the proper authorities for it. Okay. Anything else, Shama? Okay, thank you for your report. And then as community members, she is still, um, she is still, we need to take care of, um, those areas too. If you see trash, just pick it up.
Give me.
But as we develop crossroads, things will probably get to be a little bit better. Um, because we're looking forward to, to developing crossroads right now because that's the hub of our community where we have a store down there, the flea, flea market happens down there, the cleanup, um, is partially done. Um, and then the other thing that they just wanted me to announce to you is that if you know of a pile of concrete, broken up concrete or anything like that, to let Vernon know so he can tell our, um,
Contractor.
Contractor over here, Rick. Because he needs that, those type of things to recycle it as the base for the, um, building over here. We all need a lot. So if you see one or know of one or know someone that has a pile that needs to be gotten rid of, let us know so that we can, it can be picked up and, and then, um, crushed for the building over here.
Let me see something real quick. Just wanted to go ahead and remind everybody that, yes, that's true. While I was driving around the other day, um, I saw a couple of the pinyon pickers you know, leaving their ice chests underneath the, the trees. So if you guys are out driving around, just please remind the people that are not from here or people who are from here, please take their trash with them, because I had to take this out and clean up around this area. Um, this was here, this one. Um, this was here, this one here was going towards the scenic view by double decker area, pass that way, so. While I was driving around, that's what I saw, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows. And then also remind everyone to stay on the roads. Don't be going out here and driving around and making new roads because you're too lazy to go over to the tree to pick up pinyons. Just, let's try to keep the vegetation as, as much as we can, being that we're in a drought. Let's try to keep the vegetation, um, here without us driving all over it. That's my report.
Okay, so, uh, Otto. The only thing that we can say to these, to these visitors or regulars is that pick up your trash, clean up after yourself. And then the other thing, we can't prevent them from picking pinyons, not unless they're doing it with your, the tree that's in your yard. Other than that, beyond that, all we have to do is just let them know, pick up your, pick up, pick, pick up, uh, clean up after yourself and please do not make new roads. There are roads that are already there, utilize them. That's the only thing we can say, uh, right now. All right. Council delegate Herman Daniels is not here with us, uh, meetings and all that, and so is his legislative district assistant is also not here. Um, he text me and he said that he got tied up into having to go to some meetings today, so I guess he was out there doing that and then didn't come home and had to stay in Wonder Rock or something like that to attend other meetings. Um, did they send the report and they didn't send the report? So, A Day, so if you see them.
One.
Let them know. Let them know that they need to be here. Quarter grazing representative, Mr. Bigay.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Yeah. Uh, time, from there. You're coming, hey, that's been there, I don't know if they got it all out or whatever. I don't know. They just love it. It is. Well, it's coming that we were doing that. So if you don't, you know, you could, I don't know, maybe die between, you know, uh, his ear. It is. I don't, other than that, it is training and everything. It is. Some have wild cows and they have, they haven't run, trained them, especially the canyons. It's all, 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 all done, if you want to know and, uh, I don't know. Other than that, by the end of this month, we have to turn everything in. Thirty, everything has to be in. Uh, that's another nation, also the D I A of the courts. Yeah, uh, uh, yeah, uh, the numbers. Uh, okay, looks like that. Then we got about seventy-five percent of our grazing. Uh, eighty, eighty-five, somewhere down there. It's going to have a one, one fifteen, one nineteen. A lot of them all don't have and moved away or your, your dad or something, uh, some of them using here. Have brandy or anything, not a cow. So that's the way I have to turn it in this year. So it is. Although, uh, everything went well with us and, uh, although there's supposed to be some change for the year, maybe, uh, next year, that is, uh, there are horse ramen, you know, although, uh, you will get called, you are a ramen horse ramen. Let you know there's at least about hundred, hundred fifty horses running around, but have all horses going back. It adds a ramen goat, and also some donkeys. It is a wolf, a new wolf, first of them in the canyons. Now, now they've got, uh, wait, some people to the canyons, you know, yeah, it's all, you've got a lot of cows. We don't, I don't want to get, uh, district one, right, they get, I see, uh, they, uh, they, uh, they, uh, uh, I didn't give it to you, like, nearly, I think, I don't know, you've got, uh, so. Some are branded, some are not branded, or what, not branded, they won't brand them and, you know, you are, you know. Uh, that, uh, that, we did it, all, all, all the city can't run and run it up and it's all wild down there and, oh, 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 man. So, canyons, you know, yeah. So if we saw possible, we can get rid of it and, um, you get, so, maybe, because, yeah, it's, uh, it's, uh, because it's, uh, yours, you know, it's, uh, so, especially if they, uh, uh, so. We be careful doing around there, then, uh, we, uh, we, uh, so, it is, uh, 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 uh. Oh, a lot of, um, uh, uh, better are rolling around. We, I see they start opening up Monday, uh, tachib horse, just eat, I don't know, they have, just eat, for that. You won't see all these, you don't need, we were, uh, grazing meat and we have gone on the backyard. You won't see all these bears up, it is, uh, it is, uh, they'll be there. Because they were hungry. In that, uh, yeah, this is, uh, uh, see, uh, some of the, uh, uh, bears around, but, uh, it is, uh, especially during the season, uh, yeah. Uh, it does not mean, uh, uh, it is, uh, uh. Take care of your livestock, make sure they have all shots that you give them. And then, four times, uh, banda, uh, uh, nacha, that all, uh, they got it. So, see what was your time, if you're, if you're, if you have a, uh, I just, oh, I don't know, they, right, everything down, when they get a good shot and all that. So when they take it to the market, they take those. It's, uh, they, they come up pretty good with their pricing. Prices are still a little bit high, pretty soon it'll be declining, they, uh, uh, uh. They, uh, uh, uh. So, so try to take care of your livestock, uh, 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 uh. Uh, she, uh, that all, they got it.
So late. The other time, we have seen that in the Chicago Valley. Or the jet, it's traffic and so evening now, you pass down your, your grace and permit again, give to somebody that that will be around there. Now I get to the days of God, not on, on the, on the permit, the home. So you, that's how on das. We, you're, that's your fancy to get down and we never use it again. For like use, we are just like, hey, we, um, take it, take it out and liquidate. So it is our, we are all that they're saying, yeah, no, so, so it's in the, uh, uh, ah, most of those. Although, uh, uh, when the tomorrow, eh, yeah, now, now, my chance for just to do crazy maybe. Do some transfer and all that, eh, appropriate, uh, every recommendation. You can't go see it tomorrow. Although, when the, eh, yeah, permit this meeting, eh, permit, permit to get out, I mean, eh, uh, even after grace prayer to come for, uh, certification, quality, good insurance, or yeah, eh, other, uh, certification that they did that. So, so I, oh, uh, we need, re-certification, eh, eh, done, eh, so I asked him if he could come again, when the same day, eh, it's not over there. So it is, uh, uh, so that's, eh, eh, you better, cause you know, I'm gonna give to eh, eh, be quality, sure, eh, uh, you know, you know, they teach you how to do it, eh, uh, how, how to give shots and everything. You know, the proper way to do it, what to give and where, when. So, eh, yeah. Uh, but not painful, eh, if you do have permit, being a permit holder, eh, when you find that we need needle, eh, 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 yeah. Although, Jesus, let's say such. Other than that, take good care of everything, uh, eh, about that, yeah. Sure. Come winter and then your team, but yeah, oh, yeah, the thing else and that. So, yeah, thank you.
Questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, sir.
Then Wednesday or Thursday, sir. Here says Thursday, Wednesday. The roof is easy.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Says Thursday, here.
Yeah, eh, eh, without, eh, eh, without the, eh, the club, eh, the club. So if our month is eleven. It has all changed, well, we standing, we willing to stay there and have a, a ten, Sancho, if not, so, uh, on, eh, uh, we got, uh, where it is, the tent. And I maintain the shoes to carry, eh, eh, so permit is so, that, that's already kind of scheduled, eh, eh, start off. Uh, so, uh, uh, eh, to go, eh, eh, uh, Western agency, eh, eh, being Sancho. He said, um, twenty-one, or the nineteen, eh, Sancho, uh, district two, that are, uh, we, we're hosted over there, eh, eh, eh. Eh, she, eh, eh, now, permit holder, yeah, eh, 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 she that is hard, uh, uh, to, eh, eh, yeah, uh, right, later, eh, eh. Okay, thank you, Jack.
All right. Thank you for your report from the Grayson representative. Otto Navajo Nation TBK Head Start Program, Christine Bigman. Here, not here?
She wanted to be on the agenda, eh?
She wanted to be on the agenda, she's not even online, huh? Okay. So just go ahead and go to the next. All right. Next is, um, ARPA project updates, uh, Stanford Lake is gonna give us an update.
Oh, yeah, eh, James Stanford, uh, this is, uh, obviously, always national, uh, the warehouse, we, eh, the, eh, this is, uh, no, verification, eh, uh, very, very, general contractor, eh, he told us, uh, verification in two different homes, but we, eh, don't bother. Uh, project schedule, keep it, uh, keep it, the project schedule, eh, also in the building, uh, general, uh, uh, it's, uh, thirty. Well, um, current schedule on the warehouse, eh, we, uh, um, design, eh, um, architect, uh, similar to here, and there are always completed, by the, uh, well, the foundation design, uh, should be done, uh, by the end of this month, or sooner. So that information, eh, as we stand, uh, so you can sign it up by all the professional people associated with the buildings, uh, eh, eh, that drawing people get the burden, uh, uh, officials within here, but also the general contractor, uh, it's not something. Next Monday, eh, the metal building, eh, order, I don't know, eh, 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 engineer, eh, yeah, uh, uh, they fabricate it, so, eh, delivery next Monday. So next Monday, I'll be, eh, here with general contractor, eh, I'm going back, uh, materials, and when you set it, uh, well, the general contractor, eh, uh, he's been, uh, getting a lot of the, uh, concrete, he started with some of the central concrete, but it's a little deep, but they, uh, constantly, uh, old, uh, hurt, and some of that material, I mean, he, what's that, uh, eh, uh, chopped the hook out, some of the waste of their, eh, he brought those over, and it's come way back, back, uh, it's all those old concrete, and he crushed it down, and then he, he had this rock crush it, eh, down to certain sides, and he still, so, so, recycling, eh, so, you can see some of the laid down, uh, last, last one. So he's almost done with that. Other kid, uh, besides the metal building, have that here, he's gonna start forming the, the foundation, uh, of the, not, uh, following the, uh, reinforce the, eh, mark goes out, and it's take those. Other kid, eh, in this month, uh, probably the first week, uh, about two, is, is when they're gonna get the concrete, some order of concrete, uh, uh, from the big, uh, cement, uh, but for me, I'm gonna review, the mix, make sure it's nice, uh, it's, uh, concrete, before it is, eh, so once it's proved, then you'll take that next two weeks, you take that concrete, uh, pour it into the hole. Oh, it's, he has that, um, set up here, probably before it's here, and once it's here, for about three, seven days, I'll look at the test, make sure it's fine, eh, uh, about three thousand pounds, three S I, uh, it's no problem with the warehouse. So at that point, uh, I'm permanent, but also, um, private, to local people help me out.
With my club, sir.
This, so I still, uh, I'm, so, uh, I mean, about three or four weeks, or have that, eh, I don't get it, I mean, if it goes fast, I'm there, um, the roof, uh, walls, eh, the, uh, side, once those are done, hopefully before the, uh, then he start working inside. So it's, what I'm scheduled on this nine month, like, eh, 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 so it's sort of around schedule, eh, so, everything working out, I'm just, uh, design, build, eh, uh, this, this, uh, method, uh, sometimes, some other projects, usually, exactly, just, uh, first, the floor construction, so, but in this case, because you don't have nine months, you have to build, design, build all, intergated, eh, this, uh, it, eh, that's more, eh, so, uh, then, so that's what we're wrapping the warehouse, uh, a lot of this is, uh, the, uh, this, uh, this, uh, the other thing that Rick, uh, the general contractor, that we brought here, Prescott, uh, so, one thing that he's been doing also, in, in the time that he's about away from the party, is, uh, he's been helping, eh, one of the things that he helped, or two things I'd like to point out, his help was the senior center, eh, probably had, uh, some bad pipe, and, eh, put, uh, gas at, it was, it's something, so he went out on his own, uh, time to help figure out those out, and then the senior center, they came, and so, uh, so, put the pipe in, and then he covered those back up, so, um, he said, I work about twenty thousand dollars, I'm gonna come and do that work, but he said, that's, we're given the opportunity to work here, that is helping you pack that, eh, though he's not also burning, with some, he took some of the debris from the crossroads, whether that whole, like, this previous door, some of that steel, eh, he pulled those out with the burden, and his, uh, work, eh, he, eh, yeah, there's, there's a steel, he took it to the big steel, and then he stuck it, so he did that, and some of these trees that, they don't go, he's, I can't remember who the rest is, like I said, he took those trees, they're the trees out there, so they can have value. So things like that, he's been helping, eh, I've seen him last week, he's okay, he used his, um, machinery, helped, uh, take some of the materials out of, on the trucks, and really, and then he put it to the warehouse, to the existing warehouse, so things like that, he's been helping out, so, uh, so, like, to my team, I think I, I appreciate it, eh, that, so, then my team, it's, uh, I mean, we were put into a small budget, uh, to talk about money, but still, because it's me, I've been, uh, working with page high school, in one other, uh, school, that I've, sort of, keep back to this, the, the sports, sports, uh, some of these sports, uh, which they didn't, uh, help us, but we moved on, uh, or, uh, so, I was, helping that, so, I guess, some of, some of the kids run out, they're in a truck, or, or, they know the school, or you can have that, or, uh, uh, I think, uh, we're helping try to give back that, so, anyways, and then the second project that was given to us, um, this, uh, burning, eh, the, uh, electricity, uh, we decided, I said, uh, Rick, the, the contractor here, he said, yeah, well, uh, we wired twenty two homes, uh, so, helped today, but actually, this is not so much a start, you know, four of them that we rewired, uh, home, added, or what is, we sort of, uh, being, uh, eighteen one to, so we're just going down to this, uh, burning gave us, uh, four, uh, like, uh, four of them, Leo, Jordan, Cheryl, Ex-Phish, he, Perk, that's John, uh, Martin, John, Kurt, wherever, uh, there was, so, going down, it's just, uh, hopefully, we have a nine month schedule, but it's, uh, we're doing a lot, uh, so, we'll, we'll be, uh, a lot of these as, uh, the only thing that haven't, was completed, uh, these four, the thing that I think completed is, uh, connection, eh, we were part of, they were just, eh, just waiting on, eh, we, eh, there's no fact, so, I don't know how long it will have to, eh, make sure, while two, two homes that was, was wired, eh, about, eh, in one, Rick, I've also been doing is, I think, uh, two homes, uh, that's not part of this, that burning's a bit tough, it's, uh, maybe helping some of the wires, so, help one, one of the residents, eh, talking to jurisdiction, and then looking at another one, cross, cross roads, uh, still, eh, jurisdiction, eh, that, eh, that's why, eh, for, uh, part of what I had, so, anyways, if you guys have questions, let me know right now, or, you know, send email, or, see, I can notice, yeah, uh, so, the question.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lee. I can't, um, I think it was, what did I say, you were my grandpa?
Oh, actually, uh, this is, uh, the, uh, uh, the, uh, 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 uh,
yeah, so it's my grandpa and my little brother. Yes. Vernon, you have the four.
You don't think it's, um, our project for the warehouse, for, uh, number six right now, for the doors, we're starting on, then, we're finished five of them so far, uh, we're, um, we're the doors, we're jumping back and forth, with Henry Reed, eh, he's on our, um, on our list also, but, Henry Reed is, um, I guess one was low, um, a little far down, and then they built it back up, uh, from the Navajo, and, um, Navajo, eh, relief fund, COVID relief fund, uh, they're, they're working over, they built, uh, building back up, they're putting the siding on, they're putting the, um, the roof on, and we're, we're coming there, and we're, um, we're gonna do all the, um, the group work, sightings, and, um, installation, eh, the, um, the sheba, so, so that's what we're gonna be doing after great, and, eh, so, the doors, what we're doing, uh, what, um, we're taking out the roof right now, um, we're , um, siding roof, like this, like this project, we can start going faster, because we want to get at least the roof on, on the first, and, um, and then we'll go back into, into the houses, to really create our homes, because we got like, I was thirty, about seventeen, um, move, um, we're gonna complete like five, six, five, you know, but this one too, um, towards the same old two. So, all these renovations, we have a lot of, um, good problems, um, mainly the roof, the, um, the roofy part, um, and also, the windows, we just replaced the windows, replacing, um, the sheba's, that, we're replacing all that, so that's a part of, eh, so far, so, um, so, so now, we're gonna, uh, doors, we'll give it for like, uh, two weeks, and then we'll jump on, eh, and after that, we'll do the albers, albers mixture, and then we have two breathing on that side, where, um, was it Mary, was it, um, Alice, 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 um, mixture, and then, um, and then we come back this direction, going back, uh, um, crossroads, right there, uh, we couldn't, I can't remember the name, ah, so.
Matta?
Uh, Matta? Perfect, yeah. So, eh, uh, that's how far we are, so if you guys have any questions, feel free to share them, I'll, uh, any questions?
How, how do we go about completing one, completing the windows?
The renovation is very difficult.
Okay.
We went through the resolution that much, so we have the name, the name under, uh, we're good to do, we'll look at your home, and, so, you guys, we can, we can, of course.
How's, how's the discretionary?
Some of these old homes, they, they're really bad, especially for the albers, um, like this last one we did, too, for, um, what was the name, uh, uh, who I had, uh, sure, to show you, to show you, yeah, so, we're gonna replace all the windows, for the track, um, and then we had, like, um, yeah, to resume the, the frame, so we have, they remove that, and then, uh, the windows in there, you get still, uh, the siding, eh, the siding, we'll do that, so, after the siding, we, so, that's, that's the part, how, how we go with renovations, which is, the archives, leaving on what information, if you guys have a lot of stuff, uh, so, windows part, uh, you also, we replaced by another, five, five more that we did so far, we replaced three stills, eh, these stills are not cheap, they're like, one thousand dollars a piece, so, we replaced that three hundred, five hundred, and this, um, I don't know, um, the door, doors, so, um, doors, doors, we, there is that they might have, eh, basically, there's still, so, so it's sort of that, we did a lot of these, albers, uh, all of those, I mean, some of them that are still, the ones that stand, uh, and those are bad, so we just live in the market, the one that's open, eh, we still, eh, so, that's what we do, eh, and then plus we do change, eh, we should, so, the process, on that part, even that, doing that, like, a couple of years, eh, fifty, sixty, hundred dollars, so, assuming, uh, eh, so, it was like four hundred dollars each, and then with the pipe, the still, like, eh, it's like a thousand dollars, so, please, that's, fifteen, sixteen, twelve, so, replace that, so we're trying to upgrade with hand stuff, for them, so they'll last, um, that's, does have many points there, and, with, with, for every one of the, every one of these homes, so, try, so, you try to get to, you cannot exceed it, you, eh, you hit it, um, we, we give it numbers, we give it like hundreds, just to not go over the limit, so, that's, that's our process, so, any questions?
Your, the answer to your question, Curtis, we have the housing discretionary under the chapter, you can just apply for it, get the quotes for what you need done, and bring it in with your application, to him, so let you know what else you need, and then A D E, it gets on the next meeting agenda, it has to be all turned in?
By, um, the week before, um, chapter, ten, so, finally, the first week, eh, start like third, third week, the third week of the month, so, it gives us a week of, um, getting that, uh, into this, uh, process, the last minute, again, eh, so, yeah, for the housing discretionary, you try to, I wonder, the windows, you say how many windows, eh?
Hmm.
Is it like a whole reservation, is it, is it like every, all your home, your whole, all of your family house?
Yeah, it's a little trailer.
On the old.
Yeah, a little trailer, but I did the inside renovation myself, but I just need to look more at the windows.
Yeah, just.
And I, uh, built myself a porch, and put the handicap ramp on it, because I've been going through surgeries like crazy, this week, I got, or did two surgeries on my, on my legs, and then, next week, I, I got my eye surgery going on again.
Yes, I hear this, um, chapter existed for fourteen, uh, and then, we now processing, eh, so, that's how that, so, we still have funding, and then I'll be allocated from next month, so, when it's, yeah, so, do you have the applications for the count, or?
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah, the, just ask for housing discretionary, um, application, that one, that one, you look, speak to other stuff, right, this is street, street board, the windows and all that stuff? Yeah, you just gotta bring the, um, you just gotta fill out the question, at the bottom, you'll, they'll say renovation, I will, for type of, um, health assistance, you need, you should check off that, so, here's, you can just write up, um, renovation, just, just check off on renovation, you explain what you need, windows, yeah, and windows, this much, and then after that, screen quotes, and then, eh, so.
On top of that, have you guys been installed, or, eh, that?
Yeah, you guys, eh, this one, just, um, chapters, helping you with one.
Okay.
So that's all, I don't have, I don't have the manpower, you must have, so, I'll be, chapters, eh, but the information, eh, I didn't, eh, yes, eh, yes.
Any other questions?
Does it have to be, like, I, you have a schedule on, uh, renovation, like, these are not, eh, I was thinking about maybe, eh, yeah, but, I think it was a minor, eh, it says, uh, that, uh, you know, I don't, but, a major one, eh?
See, um. We already filled out the, the schedule.
Yeah.
And the listing and the groups, so, eh, that's, that funding was approved for that.
Yeah, so, we have, um, like you're saying, it was approved as a group, but, um, for this area, we're in area one, which is, um, we're almost, we're almost done, area one, this is the last, and, 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 area one, and then we're going to our next phase, which is area two, which is gonna be, um, all the, from the red shirts, all the, um, for discussing game here, it's gonna be the last one, so, and then we go to area three, which is down south, four is up here, and then five down there, so, unfortunately, that one of the five of them, it's, I'm saying, turn, uh, this, I say, but, begin on next year, towards the summertime, we'll probably get them, area five, uh.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad, uh, I'm glad, uh, so we talked about, uh, you tell them, eh, uh, here, 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 certain, certain areas, maybe here, what if, eh, get some workers and hands, that under this, this, the inside, then the group just clean the roof, uh?
Well, the thing is, um, one thing is, um, you have to have a, uh, work site, work site supervisor, for the, for, and then we'll have to have it for two crews, so if we don't, and then that's what, no, we have to add more money to that, so currently, right now, how we have it is where we put all of our forces into group one, and they finish all that, in order for us to get like the second disbursements and all that, because we give them in increments for the funding, so now that, once we get done with number one, then we're gonna go on to number two, that's how it, it, we, we scheduled it with, um, Navajo Nation and how it was approved, so we only had enough money for one supervisor and five employees, six employees.
Six temporary.
Six temporary employees, and so if, if we were to go ahead and break up crews, we would have to have another site supervisor, which is gonna take more money and then.
And then that changes, uh, sorry.
Then that, yes, that changes the, uh, current agreement that we have with Navajo Nation.
Cause, uh, I, we set this up, this was done like in two thousand twenty-one, the, um, budget, the little budget, it was very done, uh, four years ago, and finally, uh, we go in, uh, this year, so if I had to go with what I had, so, I could be changing, uh, this, uh, very, and one that I did not prove that solution is, is to get a proof, so I couldn't have, I couldn't change, I was just hoping what I had. If we have any questions, uh? You there? Any questions?
Done? Okay. I'll with the next, all business, eh, can?
Do it now.
We're doing it, yeah, now. We're doing it now, now, we're going to a new business. Number one on the agenda.
Number one, T B K two zero two four dash two five three nine zero zero one, accepting and approving the August two thousand twenty-four budget reports. So. This came from the wind system, again, like everybody else, has access to the wind system to look at our budgets. Number one, general activity fund is five thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents. Number two is personnel travel is seven thou, seventy thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Number three is trust fund land claims, which is eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Number, number eight is summer youth employment, we are at fifty thousand. Number nine, housing discretionary funds is sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. L G A, which is eight thousand fourteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Chapter official stipend, six thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents. General, scholarship general fund is fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and zero cents. Uh, scholarship plan fund, which is one thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. P E P, which is eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Veterans, eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Emergency, fifty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Now twenty-one is chapter maintenance and operations, four thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Navajo Nation sales tax, twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Agricultural infrastructure fund is three thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Unhealthy food tax is one hundred and two dollars and ninety-eight cent, ninety cents. ARPA funds is one hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Bringing us a total of four hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay, do I have motion? Hey, motion, just say. That's all? Second. Curtis. There you are. Okay, questions, comments, concerns on the budget? Just like to let you know, we're no longer a million dollar chapter.
Until we get our second.
Thank you. No comments, questions, or concerns, I'll go ahead and ask for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, for those online. Okay, twenty-seven.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero zero one. Passes with twenty-seven approvals, zero opposed, eleven abstained. Number two.
Number two, T B K two zero two four dash two three, two five, two five three nine zero zero two, accepting and approving monthly cash receipt deposits for August two thousand twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents, as budgeted.
Okay, motion? Melissa? How was this?
Oh, yeah, that was, uh, Michelle.
Michelle. Is that Addison or Addison for yours, Michelle? Second? Persol. Let's see. Questions, comments, concerns? No questions, comments, or concerns, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Eighteen, seventeen, twenty, twenty.
Oppose? Abstain? T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero zero two, passes with twenty-eight approval, zero opposed, ten abstained. Number three.
Number three. T B K two zero two four dash two five three nine zero zero three, accepting and supporting the student financial assistance to the eligible applicants in the amounts requested, sponsored by chapter administration. Michelle and Shannon.
Okay, uh, our two recipients. Michelle and Shannon. Um, can you go ahead and, or?
Motion.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Erica, I'm from Denver, I'm from Denver, so I'm going to show off this kind of, to not give it to her, just to go about my life. Hi, I'm Erica, I'm getting this scholarship fund for this year's fall semester. I go to school in Phoenix, I fell in love with her, I'm hard to cover. And my major is, um, psychology. And hope to go up to university after that, so I hope to get approved for my scholarship. Captain Shannon, I didn't have any issues, but it's just sort of being, that's just, you, that's just, great, Jack.
I know, okay.
Okay, comments? Concerns? Questions? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, opposed? Abstained? Okay, TBK 2024-253-003 passes with 29 approvals, 0 opposed, 9 abstained. Number four. Thank you and congratulations.
Number four is TBK... Number four is TBK 2024-253-004 approving and supporting the budget transfer of $500 from 12-6605-05 stipends-meeting special to fund 12-6605-01 stipend-meetings, planning $500 to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Okay, motion? Jamie? Not a steam. Second? Okay, questions, comments, concerns? Okay, no questions, comments or concerns. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Abstained? TBK 2024-253-004 passes with 26 approvals, 0 opposed, 13 abstained. Number five.
Number five, TBK 2024-253-005 approving and supporting the budget transfer of $579 from Fund 12-6605-05 stipend-meetings special to Fund 12-6605-02 stipend-meetings regulars $579 to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Motion? Jamie? Second? Soa? Soi? Questions, comments, concerns? Yeah?
For money transfers, at the beginning of the fiscal year, budgets are made and approved, yeah. That'll be like next month, if the budgets come through and everything is done. Next month, we'll be approving the budget for the fiscal year of '25. But as those budgets are being worked through, through the month-to-month-to-month, some of the budgets that they say is restricted, or they say is not, they do the budget slot, that they don't really give us a leeway on how to do our own budgets. So sometimes, the money that is budgeted, like let's say, let's talk about the stipends. These stipends, that's our stipends, yeah. We get paid 500 a month for planning, and then 500 a month for the meetings. So, at the end of the fiscal year, which is like, it is now, this is the last month for the fiscal year. Towards the end of the fiscal year, you deplete some money in certain ones that were budgeted. But ADN, you take that money to replenish what is being used, actual. Like for this one, it's going from special meeting budget to our official monthly stipends. So, this means that, in our stipend, they didn't put the council delegates, did not put enough money into our budget for the stipends. So, we're putting this money to safeguard next month, in October, because we're anticipating that the council delegates are not gonna get our budgets approved right away. So we're anticipating, since we have money in our special meeting, part of it, we're anticipating that it'll go, that the budget will not be there for us to hold a meeting next month. So, since we have this in our special meeting, we're putting that money to cover that cost. So we're just kinda thinking ahead of how it's been these past few years. October 1st, a budget was taken. And then by the time meetings come, the budget is still not approved. So sometimes, we have to safeguard that.
So you still take it out?
Oh, yeah, we still, we still put it there. So...
Five hundred each?
Yeah, for, for one of the meetings, at least one of the meetings will be covered. But in case, this is the first time that this is gonna be put here. But in case, the money that is put in our budget, the chapter official budget, at the end of the fiscal year, not a whole lot, because we get paid for all the monthly meetings, twice a month, the monthly meetings. And then we also get a budget for attending two of Western, Western agency meetings, and two of the regional, which is NOS, yeah. So we get paid for four other meetings, other than the chapter and planning. But altogether of these other meetings, it's altogether eight for the quarters. So, but most of us, if we don't go to these meetings, or don't get paid for it, A, it goes back into special meeting again, at the end of the year, when carryover budgets are used. So, but this is what that is, with any budget line that is, that we have as a budget. Even under administration, a lot of paper is used, a lot of ink is used. So budgets for that, these copying machines, they have expensive ink. So, all black, the different colors. So they're, they're over like $150 each cartridge, that you put into the, to the copy machine. And if you use your copy machine constant, for color and black and all that, on a daily basis, you have to constantly replace them, other costs of what they go up. So whatever they budget for, administration, you say, gets depleted. But you might have, under the same budget, a different line that has money that's still in it, because you're not using it for that. The cost for that is not as frequent. So you put the money where your most usage is, so that you can keep the continuity of business going. So that's what's gonna happen. This month, this month, most of it is that, towards the budget season, ending of the budget season. Hopefully, we have a good budget line from next month on again. But this is what you'll see. If we have more control over our own, how to do our own, to do our own budget, we'll put the money where it needs to be. But, the NAFO nation still wants to take, have control over how the budgets are.
They're just making it complicated.
Huh?
They're just making it complicated.
Yeah, but we fight all the time. We fight for it all the time, no matter what. We advocate and tell them, "Give it to us, give it to us." Any other questions?
Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Thirty.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, TBK 20-2, TBK 2024-253-005 passes with 30 approvals, 0 opposed, 10 abstained. Number six.
Number six, TBK 2024-253-006 approving and supporting the budget transfer of $641.09 from Fund 12-6605-04 stipend-meetings agency to Fund 12-6605-02 stipend-meetings regulars $641.09 to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Motion? Michelle? Axel? Second? Jim? The I's and N's run away with them. Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? If there's none, call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Abstained? TBK 2024-253-006 passes with 27 approvals, 0 opposed, 13 abstained. Number seven?
Number seven, TBK 2024-253-007 approving and supporting the need to purchase a storage building for all NOS regional chapters, and request the nomination council delegate Herman Daniels Jr. to seek funding for the chapters.
Motion? Soa? Soi, second? Amy? Questions, comments, concerns? No questions, comments or concerns. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Thirty, thirty-one? Thirty-one.
Opposed? Abstained? TBK 2024-253-007 passes with 31 approval, 0 opposed, 9 abstained. Number eight?
Number eight, TBK 2024-253-008 approving and supporting the, supporting for housing discretionary assistance to eligible applicants in the amount of $450 to their selected vendor.
Motion? Paul?
Hello, uh, Helloe.
And Helloe? Okay, I'll put Paul Goodman as the motioner, and Helloe as the second. Okay, questions, comments, concerns? Yeah?
It started at what? It all depends on what the budget is, and how many people is supposed to help him. We... There is different, different amount for the different ones, like... What do you call it? Sanitary. What's that called?
Septic.
The septic tank, septic cleaning. There's only a certain amount for that.
What do you want to say?
Well, the septic guy is, uh, 600, yeah.
Seven.
Seventy, I have seventy.
For septic, one of them, they call it 900, then 700.
Yeah. It's, septic tanks, septic tank cleaning is one of those ones that we can't, we... What they're pricing is, I think is outrageous. But I don't know what they're including in their pricing. So it goes up and down.
They're including gas lines.
So I, but the thing with us as chapter is, we can only budget so much for whatever budget line they give us for that. The question was, the housing discretionary last month was 250, but this one is 450? I said that.
Okay, um, okay, you guys are talking about, the 250 for sewer, like, um, sewer, septic, that's all I think, that's 250 right now, because at the beginning of the year, and this, and last year, it's year to year from now, based on him quoting for $500, so it was half that amount. Now, he's at 750, so he jumped within, within this year, he jumped 200, almost $50. So this coming fiscal year, I'm gonna go half of that, yeah. So this, this year, a lot of this number, there's this allocation that was based on something that he was pricing at that time to now. So, so, the whole thing is that it goes, we, we, we run it through resolution, and as it stays the way, the way it's, the way it was told to be in the budget, that's how it has to be for the whole fiscal year. So, right now, I believe he's at 750, so I'm gonna try to swap that two things up. So that's all the difference, between the 450, and the 250, if 250 for septic, you know, and the 450 for a lot of other options on there, and renovations, for home compliance, all this other stuff that's on there, so that's why it's 450. That's the difference.
So after I get, I was looking for my chapter, was he trying to keep it at 500?
To be a set price?
To be a set price?
Oh, we should, we could probably do that, but I gotta talk to him, talk to him.
Since, since he's been, people were trying to get it set for the chapter, I think, for the price.
If I had said, like, at the beginning of the year or something, so, um, yeah, like, you know. If you guys check, I'm trying for over here or something, yeah, I mean, I can, we can talk to him, but it's, it's a bit gross.
And even with that, we don't have to, um, deal with, call for proposals or whatever, to see. Because, right now, right now, he's the only one that's here, I think.
I think he's the only one that's lower too. Which is on that side, they're like 800. They're like 800, you got 900, good. So he's like 750 right now, he's a little smaller than that.
What's the name? You need to find a real woman, she has a bit on it. Not just one guy, you know, he's taking advantage of that.
Maybe he's local?
Yeah, he's local, but he's still...
Yeah, but the whole thing is, local, like, we do, we try to support the local community first. That's the whole thing about that.
He's local?
No, he's not. So that's why I say, like, us, we always support, uh, uh, my area, for example. We support our area TBK, the trade coast, for supplies, food supplies. We don't go anywhere else, we get it from here. The chapter is quite different. So that's very local, that's why, we don't go, we don't go food shopping in a cage, we handle, we do it here. So that's enough, and that's why we do it here, first.
So, are you gonna ask him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can ask him.
And then, you'll find out by next month?
We should, I should look.
Okay.
I'll figure out, let's see what can you have in common. This next fiscal year, here for 245, here, for September to September, October to September. We can try to set it, uh, green, chapters, will have, we need to work, we need to, um, the community, the local, the new, like, we had that set, first. This is not hard, for the community, something like that.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Let's take five before we do this four.
Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Helloe?
Twenty-eight.
Opposed? Abstained? TBK 2024-253-008 passes with 28 approvals, 0 opposed, 12 abstained. Number nine?
Number nine, TBK 2024-253-009 approving and supporting the budget transfer of $313.87 to 10-6503 repair and maintenance vehicles to fund 10-6607 seminar as a registration fees of $313.87 to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Motion? Michelle? Second? Patty? Questions, comments, concerns? If no questions, comments are concerns. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Opposed? Abstained? TBK 2024-253-009 passes with 27 approvals, 0 opposed, 13 abstained. Number ten?
Ten is T B K two zero ten is T B K two zero two four two five three dash zero one zero approving and supporting the referendum measure to be placed on the two thousand twenty-four general election to reduce the commission from, uh, commission Navo government development to, from twelve to five members while working with the twenty-fifth Navo Nation Council to introduce legislation of referral to be administered by the Navo Elections Administration.
Motion?
Jamie. Can I make a motion for, uh, number ten, number eleven, and thirteen? The passing of two twenty, so, we're losing the floor.
Okay, motion is made to include to hello, yeah?
Combine.
Combine? Motion is made to combine T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one zero, T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one one, and T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one three. Um, go, do I have a second? I'll do Michelle. She was the quickest. Okay, and go ahead and read those. Uh, eleven and thirteen.
Eleven, T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one one approving and supporting the initiation of the process to adopt a local tax ordinance as per the nomination tack, nomination local tax code C J A dash twelve dash eighteen and model chapter tax ordinance template. Number thirteen, T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one three supporting the removal of nomination President Dr. Boo Van Nigren and Vice President Rochelle Montoya and administration directing the Tupi kin chapter council delegate to immediately request a removal resolution, urge the Speaker of the nomination council to direct their legislative council to make this legislation a priority and commence discussions on removal and further directing the Tupi kin chapter council delegate to execute the purpose of this resolution.
Okay, those are the three combined resolutions. Questions, comments, concerns?
So, our vote on the number thirteen, number ten, number eleven, number thirteen, our vote, odd, it's saying it's okay to go about approval of the movement, that works it?
Yes. So if we do a yes vote, if you do a yes vote for the, for the three, you're supporting all three resolutions to do what they say it does. Uh, thirteen, Nikiya Ya is saying to start the process of removal of Dr. Boo Nigren, our president, and our vice president, um, Rochelle Montoya, and the administration, just not him, and just not the two, but the whole administration that they have.
And the chapter official is not supporting this?
Yes.
Can I ask five, can you tell us a reason why?
The reason why we are wanting to introduce this legislation is because, this resolution is because, one, there have been many occurrences as him not attending any of the Western Agency Conference, uh, council meetings. Number two, is not attending any of the NOS meetings that we have had. Number three, we've always been asking him to sit down at the table to get all of our priorities in place, but he hasn't even in, uh, provided any invite for us to even come to him and, and present our case to him. Telling him why we need a transfer station, ask, telling him why we need our public safety building to be funded and built soon as possible. We need a waste management system up here, we need our, our highway here to be regraded and re-improved. Um, we were talking about doing a roundabout system over there at the, uh, ninety-eight and Navarot sixteen area. We haven't had any support from that area. Um, along with that, he hasn't, um, uh, he hasn't even, I mean, he hasn't even been a part of the, of us as a community, he hasn't even come out here to even provide his, you know, game plan on how he's gonna do economic development or anything like that. Much less Western. I mean, even with the, even with the veterans' housings, we already had two veterans who, not from Western, but we already had two veterans within Navo Nation who had their housing to demolish on a promise. And so, and with his current administration that he has put in place as the executive directors, they haven't even had any, um, meetings with us to, you know, get some of these projects going as well. I mean, the indoc director, we can't even get Tom Platero over here to assist us with now B I S Navarot sixteen. During the snowstorm that we had earlier this year, it was hard to get indoc to come out here to at least grade up the roads. Not only that, us as the officials, we were also dealing with, uh, site assessments here within the community at Tupi kin. But we also went up to Navo Mountain to assist the Navo Mountain officials because none of them were there. And trying to advocate for the community here, it doesn't seem like we have the support from the Navo Nation president, nor his administration and the vice president. I mean, heck, I even asked for funding to get the, um, the, uh, earth and dams that has been a constant the topic on, has been a constant topic with Eclipse. Um, we did have Montoya, uh, Vice President Montoya, um, stated that she was gonna come out and do some site assessments with us, but so far she hasn't, she never came. So with that, it kinda just gives me the intention or gives us the insight that, you know, we're not his priority. We're not here for, he's not here for us. He's just up there using his, his name, his little logo, and using that as his, as his only thing that, I guess, his only, uh, I guess, image, I guess you could say, without ever really coming back here to the people and really helping us with what we need. Whether we voted for him or not, he still has a obligation to us as Navo people. I mean, a lot of, I know a lot of us here probably voted for Nez, but, you know, regardless, either way, he's still our Navo Nation president, and he still needs to come here to provide us the services that he campaigned on and he promised. And so far, he's not living up to it. And so this one seems to be like the last stretch. And now, as you guys can see, we have Mr. Bigman out there who's doing a recall for the Navo Nation president. This resolution right here just sort of tops that. Makes it an official, makes it a stance that, hey, that's at Tupi kin, we are not gonna be fondled around, we're not gonna be thrown to the side. We wanna make sure that we have a stance in saying, hey, this is what we wanted and you are not promising it. And you're not, you're not executing your promise, so this is what we're gonna stand by. A, B, and you know, that's why, uh, I wanted to put this resolution before you guys.
Call for votes? All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Two. Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Twenty. Twenty-one. Twenty-two. Twenty-two.
Oppose? You oppose?
Yes.
Why?
Yeah.
You're the one that combined the resolutions.
Jamie?
Yes?
If you oppose, you're opposing your motion.
That's not, I mean, I still, well, I voted to
I mean. So you're opposing all three resolutions?
I made a mistake like that, I should have just had the ten and eleven approval. I didn't wait for the thirty, so, but I was, I was too.
I mean, you can rescind your
Can rescind it.
Amend your motion.
And this mo, this motion can be amended, you know? As we're still on the vote.
Can I amend it?
Yeah.
Just for, uh, ten and eleven?
It's possible for ten and eleven.
I'll wait on the, um, then, then somebody can do that.
Motion was made.
The second, Michelle, the second.
So the second.
It was Michelle.
Michelle. The, the, the motioner amended her emotion.
I second that emotion.
Okay, so this motion just becomes a combined resolution of T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one zero and T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one one. You know what? I kinda think that we need to just go ahead and do this, a second motion and vote on that. No, amend it. That's right. So we amended two resolution, ten and eleven, to be voted on. So, I'll go ahead and call for the vote for those two resolutions.
Okay.
All those in favor for ten? Resolution number ten, resolution number eleven, raise your hands. The motioner, uh, amended her, her, what she said before, where she wanted to combine three uh, resolutions, ten, eleven, and thirteen. So, she amended to only include two resolutions, which is eleven and twelve, uh, ten and eleven. So now we're making a vote on ten and eleven, the resolution. Which is the referendum of the Navo General Election Commission to be reduced from twelve to five. And then number eleven, which is the initiation of the process to adopt our, this chapter's local tax um, ordinance according to the Navo Nation local tax codes. So we wanted, uh, we, this chapter wants to start, um, adding
Local tax.
Local tax to the stores, to the vendors that are here, to the store. Joke a day six percent in Dahiliya for the Navo Nation. That's what's added. So we want to start the process to add our portion, local tax, to that. Maybe one percent, two percent, three percent, four percent. Any of that, to add to the local tax. So when the tax, when we pay tax to these stores, we won't be, uh, paying six percent, but we might be paying eight or nine percent. Those other three percent will come back to the chapter here, be collected for the chapter here so that it can be budgeted for projects that this chapter has. So it's another way of collecting money for this chapter only. All right? Yes?
Number ten? Why are we going for classified? Classified numbers?
Let's see here.
On the general election to reduce the commission?
I had a I had an exhibit here. So one, the, uh, commission was, was appointed to have twelve members from nineteen ninety-eight, from nineteen eighty-nine. And with that, over thirty-five years, it has become very difficult to confirm twelve commission members. So with that, you know, being that there's five agencies within the Navo Nation, we're wanting to have at least one representative on these committees so that way it represents it equally. Instead of having twelve people on the committee, we're reducing it to twelve, five.
One per agency. Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Akdenoia, call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Oppose? Okay, and abstain. Okay, T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one zero and T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one one. Both passes with twenty-seven approvals, zero opposed, thirteen abstained. Number twelve.
Number twelve. T B K two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one two zer, zero one two approving and supporting the budget transfer of five thousand seventy-nine dollars and forty cents from Fund thirty-six dash six-three-eight-zero Building Materials to fund thirty-six dash two zero dash six-one-zero-one salaries and temporary, uh, four thousand six hundred and eight dollars to fund thirty-six dash two zero dash six-one-zero-three FICA expenses, uh, two hundred eighty-five dol, two hundred eighty-five dollars and Uh, two hundred eighty-five, two hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy cents. And also to fund thirty-six dash two zero dash six one zero four Medicare expenses, sixty-six dollars and eighty-two cents to fund thirty-six dash two zero dash six one zero six Suda expenses, eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents to fund thirty-six dash two zero dash six one eight, six one zero eight. Uh, workmen's composition expense of thirty-four dollars and fifty-six cents to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated.
Okay, motion? Jamie? Second? Michelle? Okay. Michelle asked, uh, motion, Jamie hosting, second, Michelle accent. Uh, questions, comments, concerns? If there's none, call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Oppose? Abstain. Okay, uh, TBK two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one two. Passes with twenty-seven approvals, zero opposed, thirteen abstained. Number twelve.
Number thirteen.
I mean thirteen, ha, sorry.
The one we're all waiting for. TBK two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one three, supporting the removal of the nomination President Dr. Ruben Nagrin. And Vice President Rachel Montoya and administration directing the Tapiqin Chapter Council Delegate to immediately request a removal. Resolution to urge the Speaker of the Naukah Nation to direct the Legislative Council to make this legislation a priority and commence discussions on removal and further directing the Tapiqin Chapter Council Delegate to execute the purpose of this resolution.
Okay, motion? Michelle? So she? Second? Jim? Senator? Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? Yes?
So, uh, um, this one. So what was brought forth was the local concerns and matter of the communities or other reasons here. Uh, for that reason. Uh, the chapter here, they want to stand behind the whole. For a lot of the thesis. The concerns and matters that we've got here in the local. Community here and, uh, we get no help from. The president and the administration. So that's the reason for this one. And Tapiqin. Chapter House is willing to go along with this. That's what I'm understanding.
Yes.
Alright? So, uh, yes. Uh, and, uh. We are the voice, right, or the board? This is we're the voice, we're the ones that put them up. We're the ones that. Put them up there to be our, to be our. We are leaders, so. So as we say, our voice matters. The people, what we, we are. Across, across the nation. So with that. Now, uh, I have, I think our voice. And, uh, we agree to this. Vice versa. So. Uh. We, I don't know what's going on. What are coming on? So with that, uh, there's a hundred and ten chapters that need to go. And each of these chapters, I believe, they got the same needs and concerns of the communities. And, uh. And for one person, an administration to cover all of these areas. I mean, we have local leaders. You can only do so much for your community. And you're short-sighted, you're shorthanded. You don't have everything that is needed there. At your hand, to do what you need for the people. Vice versa, it is a change, a different situation. So you have to have everything that is discretion. To be able to cover a hundred and ten chapters. So I'm just saying, you know. From this point, you know, the thing, because we're, we're going to put them up. So, but. Besides that. Let's just, you know, my thoughts.
Thank you. Um, comparison. I will do a comparison. The president office has a staff. OPV, uh, the Office of the President and Vice President, they have a staff. He has, um, uh. His right-hand person, which is the.
Deputy, uh, chief.
Chief of staff.
Chief of staff here.
Chief of staff has a staff again. Although he has all his department heads that he appoints. There's many departments, thirteen?
Thirteen.
There's thirteen departments, each one of them has a director. That's his staff. So for him not to be able to serve a hundred and ten chapters. He has a staff that can do that. Compared to chapter manager or chapter CSC, customer service rep. At the chapters of these hundred and ten chapters. There's only two permanent positions at the chapter. Which is chapter manager, or CSC as they call it. Um, administrative assistant, or, um, office specialist. Those two people at the chapter. Run everything. The chapter manager is the chapter project manager, the chapter manager is the finance manager, the chapter manager is. Um, projects manager, the chapter manager is the.
Event coordinator.
Event coordinator. Um, the chapter manager is, uh, the supervisor, the chapter manager is all these different things. But yet they are able to function at the chapter, having all these under their belt. With less pay. So the things that he brought out, that's a, that, that's the president's job. To come out amongst the people. Even to say, hey, you know, be clap on the. Hasn't even said a representative out here yet. He hasn't, uh, the only person that used to come out the first year that he was in office is Otto. Um. Late, late, the chapter, I'm the end leader, um, Slim. What was her first name? No?
Is it Angie? No, Angie? Angie, not Angie, um, Tashoni.
Tashoni Slim Best, huh?
Yeah.
She was the only one that came out here and was really wanting to work with Western Agency because nobody's hip to do that. And she did, came out, came out here, sat among our, our meetings and our NOS meetings, our Western Agency meetings. Took in concerns and she did her best. But even with that, at then. Later on, several years, several months into the, her position. She said. At then, yeah. She said. I can't get the president to, to come out here to, to see this, that this is just as important. That people on this side of the reservation do. So we've been doing everything we can, at least the second year, the, the, the second year is going to end. In those two, these years that he was in office, he hasn't really come out here, listened to any of our concerns. Everything that is happening here is happening only because the council overrides him. The money that is put out here, it's only because the council overrides him. So a lot of the things he didn't agree with, but went along with it. He does a lot of executive orders, yes. But. I'll add, as far as. Reassurance to the, to the community, reassurance to the people of the Naukah Nation. But you hear in the newspaper, you see him at all these fairs, all these other events. That, that's where he's at. So you have to start comparing, when are we going to start having interest in the things? There's a lot that can be done. But we have to constantly knock at the door. Saying, let me in, let me in, hear me, hear my concerns. And some of the famous things that political, um, politicians say is. But when they get into office. Those home fire burning and he becomes closer to window rock than it is out here. So we as, we as your leaders from here, we do everything we can to everything. So we fight for every penny that we have in our budget. And there's no help from the administration, not even the representatives that out here for us. We have to go seek him. And in a way that shouldn't be that way, we should be meet halfway, even meet halfway would be good. So even in that, um, this is what you call a resolution of no confidence. Right? No confidence. No confidence in the president, his vice president, and the administration to do the job that they, they have signed up for. That's what this is.
Uh, just. Just what I said earlier. It said to remove the administration. Do you have a kind of people next to you? Is there another group that is going there to hold?
The way the system is set up is if you remove the president and vice president. The Speaker of the House takes over. And the council. While they, while they elect, don't like, if the, before the two-year, the way our system, chapter, local chapter is set up is that. We have a four-year term. Any official has a four-year term. Grazing of representative, chapter officials, uh, school board members, they have a four-year term. If within these first two years, if something should happen to that official. Um, be it they get sick, not recoverable, um. They pass away, or people are so unhappy with their, with how they're doing their job that they get removed from their position. Within these two years, first two years, another election happens, people get elected to be in those, those, um. That position again, auto voting process happens. But for us here, if it's happening in the second half. In the second, the third and fourth year, if that happens in that, those two years, eh, ya. A person gets appointed to be in that position. By the people, like for here, it'll be by the people that person gets elected to be in this position to finish it out. So. I'm kind of thinking that's the way the system is set up for the president of the Naukah Nation too. So. So I think that the Speaker of the House and Naukah, um, the council will take over until a new president and vice president goes in there. Okay? Any more questions? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Twenty-three. Twenty-four.
No.
Twenty-four.
Uh, oppose, those who oppose. Abstain. Okay. TBK two zero two four dash two five three dash zero one three passes with twenty-four approval, zero opposed, sixteen abstained. And that concludes our resolutions. Thank you very much for being here and participating in your local government.
Uh, Bigman.
Mr. Bigman, do you have anything to say?
Oh, yes, thank you, uh, president. I wanted to let the committee members know that here, I signed a petition for the recall. So that's different from this one, because that one is your voice as a voter. And what they usually do is they direct it to the council delegate and the delegate will push legislation. Here on the other side, what this recall process here is about, is about your voice as a voter. And if you're diss, if you're satisfied or dissatisfied with how, um, your elected official is, um, carrying out their duties. So again here, the reason for our recall, we complained to committee six days ago to do a recall. And this is, is that you can only have one official on the recall ballot. And the reason for the recall was through management's legacy, the voters to get elected and attending the seats vote by not fulfilling his campaign promise and breach his duties. Breach his duties by not following an adherence and Naukah Nation budget that he worked on with council and not following campaign votes. He's neglected his duties by not reporting an Naukah people and not attending, uh, Naukah Nation councils that should just required by law. And also misconduct in office by him, are his pointies and homosexual harassment, sexism, bullying, disrespect of veterans, elders, women. So, um, you can choose the signs, you can recall. What happens afterwards is that they'll gather the signatures, validate them, then they'll go up on a vote to the initiative, for people to vote, uh, whether or not they want to approve them, yes or no. So this is, that's the process here. So I'll be outside, and if you guys want to come inside, I'll stay till, because everybody is available. So thank you.
Thank you. So eh, what that? Announcement, food distribution, September twenty-third, on Monday, chapter will be opposed, um, Veterans Day eleven, uh, November eleventh, twenty twenty-three. We all, uh, do Columbus Day. Um, the Naukah Nation does Indigenous Day, but we keep our. Chapter open on that day. Otto, your upcoming schedule, planning meeting for next month, October seventh, chapter meeting, or waiting for next month, will be the fourteenth? Yep, and then district meeting in, uh, tomorrow at Shantou. Perimeter's meeting on Wednesday here. Otto, Western Agency grazing meeting, they already had Thursday for the month, but for next month is October twenty-first at Shantou. Topsy meeting Friday, September thirteenth. TBK Veterans Meeting Tuesday, September third, which they have, their next one will be October seven. Their next one will be October seventh. And NOS Regional Council meeting, which consists of Tapi Kinn, uh, Natus An, Shantou, Odo, Oje, Toc, eh, uh, the four chapters will be meeting on October fifth at Natus An Chapter. Okay. Questions, comments, concern on any of those? Okay. Motion to adjourn? Pasala? And then, second is Curtis. Curtis, stop that. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands.
Tiffany, how do you vote? Twenty-five.
Oppose, abstain. Okay, adjournment approved by twenty-five approvals, zero opposed, fifteen abstained at two zero three P M. Daylight savings time. Thank you very much.
Okay, there you go, full draw.
Be here again next month. October.
Last time, three oh three.
Oh, three oh three, sorry. Daylight saving time is two oh three, I mean, three oh three. Did you guys know that we have a resolution that says that this chapter stays on standard Arizona time? It has never been